For six, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph Brown Act, allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency when local officials have recommended social distancing. This legislation is AB 361. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature and will be called upon and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. The meeting will also be streamed on channel 27 on Pacific Coast TV and on Facebook at facebook.com/cityofhalfmoonbay, all one word. If you want to join by phone, dial in at 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 995-8894-7925. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute and unmute. And now Nicholas Laskovich will give the instructions for accessing the Spanish interpretation feature.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable City Council members, Mr. Chidister, City Manager and staff, I would gladly do so. This is Nicholas Laskovich, Spanish interpreter. Buenas noches, les hacemos saber que esta reunión se realizará íntegramente por medio de teleconferencia. Todos los miembros del Consejo y del personal participarán por medio de la plataforma de Zoom. Esta reunión se realiza conforme a las recientes enmiendas, a las reglas de teleconferencia, de acuerdo con la ley de Ralph Brown, que permite la teleconferencia durante un estado proclamado de emergencia cuando los funcionarios locales han recomendado distancia social, que incluye la ley AB 361, que tiene el propósito de proporcionar un ambiente más seguro para el público, los funcionarios electos y el personal, al mismo tiempo que permite la operación continua del gobierno y la participación pública durante la pandemia del COVID-19. Esta reunión se llevará a cabo a través de Zoom y la interpretación al español está disponible dentro de la plataforma de Zoom. Los miembros del público son bienvenidos a participar como asistentes. Durante las porciones de los comentarios del público, los asistentes pueden utilizar la función de levantar su mano y serán llamados a activar su micrófono cuando se les dé la oportunidad para hablar. También pueden acceder a la reunión por vía telefónica llamando al número 669-69900-9128, usando el número de identificación 955-35614-4263. Si se une por medio del teléfono, use estrella nueve para levantar su mano y estrella seis para activar o desactivar su micrófono. Para poder acceder al canal de interpretación de audio en español, haga clic en el botón de interpretación que se encuentra en el icono del globo o un mundo en su barra de tareas. Aparecerá un menú y entonces podrá seleccionar el idioma español. La reunión será interpretada al español. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's already done.
Okay. Gracias, Nicholas.
Thank you.
And we will also get interpretation this evening from Flora and Michael. Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm used to that. Councilmember Rhabak.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose.
Here.
And Mayor Ruddick.
Here.
All councilmembers are present this evening.
Wonderful. So we need to approve the agenda. Why couldn't I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rhabak, I'm the councilmember Rhabak.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes.
And Mayor Ruddick.
Yes.
Agenda approved.
Okay, so the first item of business is public forum. So Bridget, do we have hands raised to speak this evening?
Yes, we are getting, gathering some currently. Let me scroll. The first person we have this evening is John Ollum, followed by Crystal Lynn from the Chamber. Let me ask John, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Just a bit of sad news. I'm sure maybe some of you have heard, others may have not, but all of you have been dealt with the gentleman at one time. Mr. Michael Stogner passed away last week. And Michael was a special guy. Michael's the kind of guy that you could look in the eye and rip on him and tell him he was totally wrong and he'd look at you and smile, say, yeah, but how can we work together? And he was real special in that way. And as much as anybody, Michael deserves, and I know he will appreciate this, deserves credit for getting rid of Sheriff Carlos Polanos. And so with that, just my people who know Michael and cared about Michael or had ever encountered Michael to know that he's giving, he's got a real hard time right now filing PRAs and keeping people up to date. Anyway, I would like to see you pull items 1B and 1C from your consent agenda. Thank you.
We have is Crystal Lynn.
Hello, I am Crystal Lynn, the president and CEO of the Coastside Chamber. And I wanted to thank the city, the council, and everybody who came to the first two nights of lights. We had a record-breaking estimated hundred people come to the tree lighting the day after Thanksgiving and we were able to do our first in memoriam, speaking of coastiders who have passed that we want to celebrate and love. And so the lights on the trees are dedicated to them. We had lots of kids come and bring their ornaments and it was really just a super great time and we look forward to growing the tree lighting year after year. And then super, super shout out thanks to everybody for coming out this past Friday for the parade. It was, it was chaos, Tom. There was lots of things going on. There was some mix-ups, but at the end of the day, everybody pulled together and made it happen and we had a record number of floats and groups at, we think about 42 and some floats that were insanely large and we look forward to continuing to grow that as well. And we got nonprofits out there to do fundraising and so far it sounds like they've done well and we're going to grow that portion too. And the kids area was a blast as always and Santa. So just thank you to everybody. There's too many names to even try to go down the list, but you know, the 1,700 people that it took to pull that off were awesome and about 2,000 locals that came to celebrate was just absolutely amazing and we just appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we go to the next speaker, I was just notified that the translation doesn't seem to be working.
No.
Can we, can we check with Nicholas?
Matthew is back on again.
Oh, it's back on. All right.
I'm checking it. Looks like it's on, but okay. Thank you for the confirmation. Okay, who's our next speaker? You're muted, Bridget. Carlisle Young.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I hit the microphone instead of the unmute button, but I think I'm on, right?
Yes.
Um, well, I wanted first of all, thank John Ollum because I was on the county Board of Supervisors meeting today and they also mentioned Michael Stogner's passing, which, you know, he kind of uncovered a lot of stuff in the county. So it's sad that he's gone, but he did a good job while he was here. The reason I'm calling in tonight, I usually just watch the meetings after they've taken place, but they had the housing element today at the county and they postponed it till next week, but one person from Half Moon Bay called in, you know, requesting the need or expressing the need for more housing in Half Moon Bay. And I, you know, it's the song that I've been hearing when I listen to you guys' meetings, it's really heartbreaking, but it looks like from what they presented, most of the low-income housing is going, or affordable housing will be over in Menlo Park, East Menlo Fair Oaks area, from the looks of what they've put forth. But the reason I'm calling tonight, the main reason is that I noticed quite a few months ago that the APN 056141610, which is the address 230 Cabrillo Highway South, a 52-room hotel right on Highway One near the Pillar Cidos Creek, that's owned by the county. And ever since it changed hands on 12/29/2020, none of the property taxes have been paid. Now mostly the county is not assessed school taxes or anything, but they are assessed for mosquito abatement and sewer. And so their delinquent has now jumped up to $57,148.17 for the two years that haven't been paid. And the next installment is due, as we all know, who pay taxes, property taxes. The next current bill is due by December 12th and that amount is additional $12,436.04. I brought this up at a SAM meeting. I think I talked to their bookkeeper and was promptly informed that SAM does not bill the each district bills. So then I brought it up at the SAM meeting and I know Debbie Ruddick was in that meeting, but also called Matthew and also the Assistant City Manager. And when he called me back, he said he was going to look into it. So I'm just concerned because I know the legal fees are running up on our lawsuit and it would sure be nice. I noticed one of your agenda items has nearly the same amount that you're paying to clear out the creek, you know, from some consultant. So it'd be nice to see you guys get paid on that. I just wondered if there's an update since the last time I talked with Matthew.
Yes, Steph, please follow up on that.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to, to just give a quick update. Otherwise I could contact Ms. Young after the meeting.
Why don't you give us a quick update?
Sure. And thank you, Ms. Young. We did speak previously and we've, we've been in contact with the county. They're now aware of the situation and they're working on it. Lisa Lopez, our finance, our admin services director is working directly with them and it should be resolved shortly. So we really appreciate your vigilance and letting us know and allowing us some time to work with the county and it sounds like it'll be resolved very soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I know they bought that in a big hurry and maybe it just slipped through the cracks, but maybe they bought three hotels and none of them are getting collected on their sewer. Who knows? Anyway, I just wanted to see you guys get paid. Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thanks to you both.
Okay.
And last one this evening, Connie Santilli. Go ahead, Connie, you're, you're on.
Great. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor and members of the council this evening. My name is Connie Santilli and I'm a board member with senior coastiders. I'm here today to represent the almost 23% of the seniors over 65 who reside within Half Moon Bay. We really appreciate the city's support for senior coastiders and the great work that's being, taking place to achieve the HMB Coastside Age Friendly Community Status. Senior coastiders operates six programs and certainly our most well-known is the nutrition program. For many, we offer the one balanced meal they get in a day. Often, our meals and wheels delivery is the only outside contact an isolated senior may have. Five days a week, our kitchen staff and the dedicated team of volunteers offer in-person communal dining as well as pick up and delivered meals for those who are isolated or no, no longer able to leave their homes. And we actually produce and serve and deliver over 4,000 meals a month. So within the two weeks of the COVID lockdown started in 2020, staff of seven that we have completely adjusted our in-person dining and delivery services to accommodate a doubling of those that we needed to serve. Brave volunteers acclimated to the significant safety protocols and adapted to the changes. And no one ever missed a meal, we're, we're happy to say. While we do get some federal funding subsidies, our nutrition program administered by the county, for administering by the county, funding is largely gotten through generous private donations. And unlike many senior centers who exist as part of the city services, Half Moon Bay is not a full-service city. So the role that senior coastiders plays in ensuring the needs of older adults in our community are being met is really crucial. We really look forward to an expanded partnership with the city of Half Moon Bay. We want to thank you for all that you do do and appreciate your continued support to senior coastiders. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and to address you guys this evening and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
We have one more. We have one more. Yuzario Dezum.
Hola, buenas noches.
Hi, good evening.
Mi nombre es Rocío Ávila.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rocío Ávila.
Y yo hoy en la, hoy estuve en la junta de Zoom, hicieron la junta de supervisores en San Mateo.
Today I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting in San Mateo.
Escuché lo que estuvieron hablando sobre las casas y desgraciadamente como dijo la señora, no hay.
And I heard what they were saying about the housing situation and unfortunately, like the previous speaker said.
Casas para Half Moon Bay, pero les recalqué que es una gran necesidad en la costa.
There is no housing in, affordable housing in Half Moon Bay, but I did highlight that there is a great need for it in the Bay Area.
El condado dijo que contaba con diferentes lugares donde podrían como hacer viviendas. Espero que en Half Moon Bay encuentren alguno para poder hacer viviendas accesibles para la, para las personas.
The county had mentioned that there are sites available for to build affordable housing and I hope that the county along with the city are able to accomplish this.
Ya que ellos están muy agradecidos con las personas de bajos ingresos y más con las personas que trabajan en la agricultura, por el arduo trabajo que hacen, esperamos que así como están ellos contentos con el trabajo, también nosotros recibamos algo de lo que necesitamos acá.
Since the county greatly appreciates that the work, the hard work that low-income people do, especially in the agricultural building and that we are recognized for our needs.
Y los trabajadores esenciales que trabajan duro, nuestras familias necesitan un hogar digno donde ellos.
And the essential workers that work very hard and our families need a dignifying place to live in.
Necesitamos que la ciudad, el condado y la comunidad nos unamos para tener unas viviendas dignas.
So we need that the city, the county and the community unite so that we can have affordable housing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
That's all we have that I see.
Thank you, Rocío. Um, the next item is proclamations and presentations and there are none this evening. I do not have any announcements of community activities and community service, except there's still two more Fridays to go in the Night of Lights and hopefully all get downtown for activities starting at 6:00 PM on the next two Friday evenings. I believe we have no report outs from recent closed sessions. We just had our first one in quite a while, so.
That is correct, Mayor, although I do want to make one announcement regarding a previous closed session in a case that has settled and a final settlement has been reached and a case has been dismissed. A few weeks ago, maybe months now, the council did meet closed session to discuss the case estate of Sandra Harmon versus County San Mateo. The city was also named in that case as a defendant and I wanted to report that a final settlement was reached in that case and all defendants have been dismissed, including the city. And that's all I have to report out.
Thank you. Um, city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three presentations, short presentations, and then I believe we have a fourth update after that. The first update will be Colleen Latier, our communications program manager, talking about our state of the city, which is coming up in two weeks. She'll be followed by Jill Ikus and Joe Butcher talking, providing an update on downtown zoning. And then our final presentation will be Jennifer Chong, who is working on a citywide grants management program. I believe after Jennifer, John Doughty, our interim assistant city manager, will make a very brief announcement.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Oops, I'm trying to, I just wanted to share some information about our upcoming State of the City and City Council reorganization ceremony that will be happening Tuesday, December 20th at 7:00 PM. We will be debuting Mayor Debbie Ruddick's State of the City address and I can say that we had a lot of fun shooting it today and I'm very excited for everyone to see it. And following the State of the City, we will be having our City Council reorganization ceremony where the council will select the new mayor and vice mayor and bid farewell to the outgoing mayor and congratulate all the three new city council members. And so this will be a really fun night. We hope everyone can join us, really just beautiful send off to Christmas. So yes, please make sure to tune in live on Tuesday, December 20th.
Thank you, Colleen.
Good evening, Council. Joe Butcher, our community preservation specialist, and I are here to give you an update about your heritage downtown zoning and the ground floor business inventory. Next slide, please. I'm, I'm just going to start this off by setting the context and taking us back to when this council adopted the code. You updated the zoning code pretty comprehensively for all the mixed-use zones and parking standards. And this was all adopted in February 2020. And so think about that time a little bit. It was certified by the Coastal Commission as, as it had been adopted by you with no modifications in April of 2020. And of course, by then we were already in the pretty heavy phase of the lockdown from the pandemic, which we were just trying to understand what was happening. That said, one of the things we had committed to you was to give you updates about how the code was working and a couple of things about it that we wanted to note is the parking reductions in particular have facilitated some of the mixed-use projects that have come forward. But we also wanted you to know about the heritage Main Street uses and to give you an inventory of vacancies and office space from time to time. We were supposed to do this every year, but during the last few years, it just didn't really seem appropriate or even practical to, to take that on. So we're feeling a lot more back to normal now with Pumpkin Festival and Night of Lights and typical Half Moon Bay activities. So Joe has gone forward and taken and updated inventory and is going to present that to you and just reminding everyone that the intent for this code was to really have ground floor active uses on that span of Heritage Main Street between the Main Street Bridge and Correia's. And Joe, you're up to share.
All right, great. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mayor and council members. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to give a quick little rundown of what it looked like back in 2019 when we did the original research for this ordinance and just show you where we were to where we are now. With the Heritage Downtown, we're talking about the 300 block down to the 600 block of Main Street. So if you look, you'll see that these were approximations of what the frontages were for vacant and office frontages from where they were then to where they are now. So with the 300 block in 2019, we had approximately 65 feet of vacant frontages. If you recall, that was back with Pasta Moon, whenever they had shut down and moved, we didn't have anything there. And then we had office frontages of about 70 feet roughly. Since that time, up to date now, we only, we have zero vacant frontages, which is great, and only 25 feet of office frontages because we actually had one office that was now converted into a art gallery that also sells a bunch of little trinkets and seems to be doing really well. Next slide, please. 400 block. Now this one was really significant as far as the changes. In 2019, we had 95 feet approximately of vacant frontages. That was a pretty barren land of, if you will, and then approximately 20, 20 feet of office frontages. And here we are now and today with absolutely zero vacant frontages, everything is completely full. We've got three new retail businesses, which actually took away one of the offices whenever they moved out. And we're expecting a large construction of a multi-use building that will be going in in a very large. that will be going in in a very large vacant space on the corner of Kelly and Main. So we're just anticipating the building permits coming through there. So we're excited to see that this block will be entirely filled soon. Next slide, please. 500 block. This one really didn't have any significant changes of any kind. This is, you know, that we've, we had 44 feet of vacant frontages in 2019. We still have the same with the old coastside printers building. As far as office frontage, still the same. It's 154 feet roughly. You have to take into consideration, these are old businesses, I'm sorry, old offices that have been here for a long time, such as City Hall. We've got the Attorney's Office across the street, dental, I'm sorry, the, the doctor's office down by Gold Works. And then we also have the State Farm Insurance. So nothing new. They've been around for quite a while. But everything else in time, even since 2019, new businesses have come and gone. But we're still holding pretty strong and pretty consistent on that one. Next slide, please. And I would say this would be the most significant change that we've had in the opposite direction, but still, we're doing, we're looking pretty great. As far as in 2019 vacant frontages, we didn't have any vacancies and 176-foot approximate office frontages, which would include the Attorney's Office and Bank of America, which again, they've been there for quite a while as well. And now, the only change is that we do have approximately 65 feet of vacant frontages. As you know, the Cottage Industries has just shut down. That's a significant retail frontage. So we're really hoping and anticipatory that something will come in here and take that space as it is, you know, a prime location. But, you know, next slide, please. So just to kind of put everything in context, from the 300 block to the 600 block from 2019 to now. Back then, we had, you know, approximately 204 feet of vacant frontages with 420 feet of office frontages, to now, we only have 109-foot approximation of frontages with 355 feet of office frontages, again, from the 300, 600 block. And if you, you know, if you look at everything that's happened, like Jill said, when this ordinance went through, it was in early 2020, with COVID and the shutdown of a lot of businesses that weren't considered to be essential businesses. It was really obviously very hard on a lot of these retail businesses. But the fact that this ordinance seems to have really proven effective through those hard times, that we could still bring in new businesses, a new visitor-serving businesses in that time. And now, here we are in 2022. The Coastside Recovery Initiative has been really excellent for a lot of these businesses that have been there. They're not exactly where they probably were pre-COVID, but they're getting back to where they were. And I think this ordinance has been really instrumental in being able to provide for their needs. And I think these number changes really signifies that. Next slide, please. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them best I can. But I think, you know, we're really pleased to see where this has gone, and we look forward to what the next steps are with those little vacancies that we may have.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? I think we're on the right track. I think we're, you know, we're heading toward a more revitalized downtown. And some of the changes we've made in Land U certainly are critical to supporting that. And I know we're working on more, so it's good news. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
And I'll go ahead and jump right in. Good evening, City Council and community members. My name is Jennifer Chong, and I'm the Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And I'm pleased to be here this evening to provide you with a update on our grant program. This is the first of what we expect to be reoccurring updates to the council and the community. But since this is the first time that I'm providing an update to the council on this particular item, I figured it's worth taking just a couple of minutes to just provide a little bit of overview and context as to what our grant program has been and what we're hoping to accomplish in the next year. Next slide, please. So for a little bit of context, we are a small city, and our little city relies heavily on grants to fund large projects. Large projects especially, but it can also be small projects or pilot projects. Really, the bottom line is, we recognize that we need grants to get a lot of the work done that the coastside deserves and that we'd like to do. That being said, every grant has a cost, and sometimes that cost can manifest itself in a match that's in the application. But more often times than not, there's a hidden cost to grants, which is the time, the resources, the energy that goes into seeking out these grants or finding them, applying for them, and then tracking them, and so on and so forth. And so while staff has been relatively successful with grants in the past, historically, we've really been more of a, we've really kind of taken a reactive approach, where we'll find out about a grant, we'll say, hey, this is a great opportunity, let's go for it. But perhaps, you know, there was more vetting that could have been done, or we could have anticipated that better, so that way we could have allocated our resources more appropriately to just make it more efficient and make sure that we're getting the best rate of return on whatever grants that we do come across. And so credit to the council for supporting the recommendation from the city manager to reorganize the city manager's office to create the Economic and Community Vitality Division, which created capacity in the off, the city manager's office to be able to give a little bit more time and attention to these efforts that we've been doing historically, to really create a little bit more structure and create a little bit more of a process that we hope will help us become even more efficient, even more, even more successful, and hopefully widen the amount of grant opportunities that we'll be able to seek and pursue in the future. Next slide, please. So really quickly, the layman's version of the goal is to get as much money funneled into the city with the least amount of investment that we have to put in. And that's both time, that is both monetary, that is again, both effort. It's being really strategic with the resources that we have, both people and money, and leveraging that to get the greatest return on investment for funding sources that will be able to go straight into community programs. And the reason the goal looks really complicated is because it sounds really simple. But again, every grant has a cost, and a lot of that time, that cost is hidden. It's the time that it takes to advocate and get to know the individuals that are funding, you know, these applications or administering it, or again, identifying them and understanding what is it that they're looking for. Because oftentimes, they'll put something out there, like, we are looking to fund this kind of program or this kind of project. But there's a lot of undertones that come with that that you can only really learn about if you take the time to sit down with those funders. There's a whole vetting process that we think would lend well to our city. So then again, we can go after the funding sources that best suit our community, our priorities, and really, you know, in the best-case scenario, have the least intensive reporting requirements. Because sometimes, this is notorious for federal funding opportunities. You might have a one small $100,000 project, but you now have a five-year commitment of quarterly reports that you have to turn in with pages and pages of reports. And so again, that's not necessarily a tangible cost that we can say, well, they want us to do a 25% match in order to get that $100,000. But that's, that's a lot of money that goes into that, to reporting on that project or that funding source that we can't necessarily recoup at this moment. And so that's something that, again, with formalizing this grants program, we're hoping to better understand what those underlying costs are so we can better evaluate which grant opportunities will be the best fit for what we are hoping to accomplish quickly. And so with that, I did want to just point out, we've been, we've been doing some internal troubleshooting or piloting, I would rather say, of some different techniques and some different tools that we think will really help to streamline our efforts and really help to create that structure that we're looking to put into this grants program. And some things that we've been doing that have been working well, that we plan to continue to expand upon and build upon in the new year, include formalizing an internal grants committee. And so this is a team of staff from all different departments that meet biweekly to really just talk about all the different grant opportunities that have come our way, trying to understand, again, what are projects that we already have in the hopper that need a little bit more funding to take it across the finish line? Or what are some new funders that perhaps we should reach out to, to create that, that relationship so we can get on their, get on their radar in case they have new funding opportunities? Or perhaps, again, advocate for new funding opportunities to fund a project that we know is coming online? And that's been working out really well, and we're planning on doing a little bit of a revamp in the new year. But that's something that we think is great, great for our little city. We've started to develop a database, which I think is really impressive already, but it's only going to continue to expand and build. That includes all past, current, future, and reoccurring grants. And the purpose of this database is really to help us understand where we weren't successful and why. And for the grants that we were able to receive, why we were successful for those grants. And of course, to be able to provide a snapshot of where the grants program is at any given time and to do updates like this. And so that's something we've been developing, and we will, we will continue to develop in the new year. And again, I mentioned how important it is to build those relationships. That's something that we're starting to put an emphasis on, even if we don't, you know, get an award, making sure to reach out to those funders and ask them why, and to see if there's maybe another opportunity that would fit the project that we, that we proposed. So that's something that we've been doing, and we will continue to put emphasis on that in the new year. And, you know, with the formalization of this grants committee, with this program, we have started and will continue to build grant-writing capacity in our organization, which I think will be critical to the continued success of this, of our grant efforts in general. One, again, our city is so dependent on grants for these big and exciting projects. And again, they're, they're just great, they're just great fits for a lot of different funding sources. And the more folks that we bring into this grant-writing effort, the more capacity we'll have. And hopefully, then, the more grants will be able to go after, after, and the more success we will hope to have. And so that's kind of all the things that we've been working on this year and where we hope that it will continue to grow in the next year as we continue to put, to invest in this program and formalize it for our city. Next slide, please. So, oh, the switch. There we go. Thank you. And so with that kind of context, the next few slides are just a snapshot of where we are right now. And currently, we are actively managing 17 different grants, two of which are joint applications. And when I say joint application, I mean that we partnered with another organization, and they agreed to be the primary applicant. And so when we, when we received the, when we received the successful grant award, that money went straight into, went straight to our community partner. And frankly, in a lot of circumstances, that's the best-case scenario for the city because then a lot of the administrative burden that I mentioned, the reporting, the tracking, you know, the invoicing, that burden is then taken on by our community partners. And so identifying partners that are willing to do that for our community and invest their time and energy into these programs is so very important. And so I'll be sure to shout them out at the end because they're really critical to, to some of the efforts that we're looking to do. But of those 17 grant awards that we're currently managing, not all, and I should say, not all of these grants were awarded this year. Many of these grants are multi-year grants that continue to roll, big CIP projects. But this is currently what we are again, tracking through this grant program. It's about $19 million that we currently have coming in from these grant sources. Of that 19 million, 1.7 was, were awarded directly to those two joint application, those partners that I'll mention later on. We currently also have five pending applications, three of which have actually already been recommended for funding. And again, that's $5.5 million, one of which is a joint application. And so if that is approved, the money will go directly to a community partner. And I do think, even though this is, you know, this is not the celebratory yay, we got the money, I still think it's important to acknowledge that there were some, you know, grant applications that we weren't successful on. And we did submit three different applications within the last few months where we requested $3.2 million, and that was unsuccessful. And again, important, I think, to acknowledge this because it's, there's still a cost. There's a cost for those applications, even though we didn't get it. And so wanted to just make sure to acknowledge that as well. Next slide, please. So highlights, these are the five latest grants that we received this year. A lot of these grants, I think the council and the community have probably already heard about, but I think it's still worth at least celebrating since, you know, these are, these are large sums of money that are going towards critical community programs and projects. Nine millions from the Highway Measure A Highway Program for the Highway One Safety North Project. 7.4.75 million from Prop 68 funds, thanks to Mark Berman's offments for the Carter Park Improvement efforts. 980, this is the most recent grant award that we've received, which is $980,000, which is going to that East Side Parallel Trail Segment Four. This is from Roosevelt to the north, northern city limits that will connect to the county's pedestrian trail. Really excited about that one, and thank you so much to the mayor and vice mayor for your support and your advocacy to get this one across the finish line. We were on the bubble and almost didn't receive money. So really, really grateful for your support to get the SMCTA Board to approve this money for us. We have, we got $500,000 from the Chance Eckerberg Initiative to support those cry recommendations, and CZI is a new funder that we've brought into the fold. And then we received $280,000 from the County State and Kaiser, total, from those three funding sources to support the CARES program, which is well-loved in our community. Next slide. And so just wanted to share the pending applications that we have of all of these, of these five applications. We've been told that the two at the bottom from the SMCTA have been, have been recommended for funding. The other ones are still quite up in the air, but, you know, we'll see, we'll see where that, where that goes. Last slide, please. And as mentioned before, those two joint efforts, huge, huge shout-out to our community partners that applied for those grants on our behalf, for our community. J&amp;D Recycling, who received a million dollars from CalRecycle for the Beverage Container Redemption Pilot Project that's still ongoing behind CVS. And then most recently, a new partner, We Hope, who applied to the Working to End Homelessness Grant from SM, from San Mateo County to, to implement a coastside safe parking program. So not just Half Moon Bay, but the entire coastside, and they were recently awarded about $760,000. This is an ongoing effort. San Mateo County has now inserted themselves as a formal partner, and so there might be additional funds coming from them to really build out and make sure that this program is a success. But again, with these joint efforts, J&amp;D and We Hope are the grantees. And so they took a lot of administrative burden off of staff while still investing these programs specifically back into our community. And so we, we thank them for, for teaming up with us and seeing the value of bringing their services over to the coastside. And so with that, last slide, it's a lot of information. Again, we hope to be able to continue to bring this back to you on a regular basis, but happy to take questions on anything you've seen this evening.
A vice mayor.
Yeah, I don't have questions. I have some comments, though. Thank you, Jennifer. That was a, a long-awaited and a very appreciated report. We, we know the staff is out there working 24/7 to make things happen for the city, but we don't often hear about the details of what you're doing. And this is a good example of staff time well-spent. I'd like to thank Matt Tittister for making sure that this grant committee could be formed. I think this is a wonderful thing, and biweekly meetings, I think, was what you said. That just, that's great, that we ought to, we ought to be just out there getting as much money as we can. We have so many things we want to do here in Half Moon Bay, and we're not going to get them done without the help of grants, as you said. I especially appreciated the mention of your failure to obtain grants because I think that is part of the learning process that's going to be so critical for our success in the future, is how do we not make the same mistake? What are the connections that we have to make to make sure that, that we understand what the grant donors are willing, are willing to give and, and how we could best request and, and ask the right questions and put forth the best argument for our case? So I appreciate that. And the last thing I wanted to say was, I think one of the places that our city has been remiss, and I don't necessarily blame the city for this, but we do not get grants from big commercial providers. I haven't seen Facebook, Google, Amazon, any of them putting money in. Uh, I haven't seen Facebook, Google, Amazon, any of them putting money into Half Moon Bay. And yet Half Moon Bay puts a lot of money into them. So, you know, I think that an emphasis on looking at that particular sector rather than just our government sectors for grants, um, is important. And I'd like to see us concentrate on that. So thank you. It was a wonderful report. I, I really appreciate the work that everybody's done to get this done. Thanks, Jennifer.
Harvey, did you want to comment?
Oh, very briefly. I, I just want to echo, uh, what, uh, Deborah just said, that, uh, I really think this is a step in the right direction. I think, uh, being more organized about getting grants is really the way to go. I just want to point out that, that, uh, joint effort with We Hope is really, uh, remarkable. I think, uh, they're a wonderful organization. And I think that kind of cooperation with other, uh, government and, uh, semi-private organizations is a really, uh, excellent way. And I agree with, uh, Deborah that if it's possible to get, uh, more involvement from the pub, private sector, uh, that would be wonderful. Um, we really need it. But thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Matthew. Um, keep up the good work.
I just want to point out that years ago, when I was first on the council in the nineties, um, the city basically refused to apply for grants. And the reason was, you know, grants come with strings attached, right? You have to meet certain conditions. And for grants from other public agencies, it's, it's understandable. There are accounting requirements and you have to have, you know, uh, fiscal practices that are accountable, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the issue of strings attached becomes a little more important to pay attention to with, uh, grants from private entities. You know, we have to be very careful about that. Like what would strings be from a Facebook or a Google? So, um, leveraging our power is super important. That's why we now have a lobbyist and we now have this wonderful grants program. But we have to, you know, careful about the, you know, the conditions that we're willing to accept from private entities that might, you know, uh, lack in the sort of accountability we need from public agencies. And, um, and, you know, commitments that we might not be able to, you know, cheap over the long term. So I think paying attention to what the, what the strings are is important, but that doesn't mean we don't apply for grants. It just means we apply for grants in a smarter way. So I, I thought Jennifer's presentation was great. Again, vetting very important, uh, especially, you know, as a, as a grant maker myself before I retired, I sometimes worked on grants where a, a grant of twenty thousand dollars involved just as much work as a grant of a million dollars, right? Because of the required, the reporting requirements and the paperwork and the cost it applied for the grant. You know, the, the cost can be just as much for small grants. So we have to be careful about how we prioritize, I think. So, uh, I think we're in a good place here. We have a, a smart staff that's, you know, figuring this out. And, uh, I'm grateful and I just want to say a good job to, uh, you know, Jennifer and, uh, the city manager and everybody else who's working on the, the problem. So. I can't, if you could, uh, close off this presentation so I can see if other council members have comments? Now I can see the full screen. Uh, Robert or Joaquin, any comment this item? Okay.
I just agree with everything that's been said. So congratulations. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Moving on to the consent calendar, uh, we've had a request to pull two items, item one B. Item one C. One B is the notification of resolution to continue holding public meetings. Then one C is the no bill to termination for the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. So, um, since the public made the request, I think we should pull those items, but move them to the end of the meeting. And are there any other items that council members would like to pull? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus, uh, items one B and one C? Which would basically leave one A and one D.
Um, I, I will move. Second. Let me see, am I muted?
No, we can hear you. I, I got it.
Okay.
Do you identify what those items are?
I don't see one, one A. I see one B.
Yeah, one A is the reading of resolutions and ordinances. So if you could just mention, um, one D, because we're pulling one B and one C.
Okay, one D. Okay, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with SWCA Environmental Consultants in the amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for environmental and entitlement services associated with the Pillar Cidos Creek Restoration and Remediation Project.
Do we have to add in one A, Catherine?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay. So you're, you're basically approving, uh, one, the motion is to approve one A and then one D. Yeah.
Okay. I also move to, uh, approve item one A.
Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call please.
Excuse me, Councilmember Reddick? I'm sorry, Councilmember Rorack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone? Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, um, is anybody in need of a break at this point or should we continue with item two A? Okay, we're moving on to item two A. That is the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two additions of the California Building Standards Code.
That's me. Good evening, my name is Mayor, also members, city manager, the chairman heads, staff and residents of Half Moon Bay. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Benjamin Corales. I'm the permit technician in the community development department. I'm Veronica Bosniuk and, uh, from public, this is the public works program manager and I will provide you tonight with the adoption of the new California Building Code. And, um, let me share that screen. So we can start the presentation. There we go. Just a little bit of a recap. The CD, the California Building Code is updated every three years. As you already know, it was originally, um, published this year in July. The new schedule happens so we can get comments or feedback and it becomes effective in January first, twenty-twenty-three. Some of the highlights, and I'm just going to mention a couple of them. Is that, uh, the permanent expiration or building permit expiration, it went from a hundred and eighty days to twelve months. That means is that, uh, this increased the expiration period from that amount of time. And, uh, this stipulates basically that it shall remain valid if the work or as by the permit is commenced within twelve months after issuance. The other one, it's about the energy storage system. This is more of a clarification from the previous code or the current code that we have right now, twenty-nineteen. This code section was updated to clarify that energy storage systems shall not be installed in any habitable portion of dwelling units to address concerns about locations such as hallways. And, uh, and they were not covered by previous restrictions. And, uh, some of the local amendments that we have right now are approved previously will remain. Uh, fire code has some, um, modifications, um, one of them being, um, what is required, what requires sort of fire sprinkler system in a, in, when we have a permit on file. Uh, any new construction requires, um, fire sprinklers, but also they are defining that, that any major remodel or additions that are fifty percent of the crosswalk floor area will require fire sprinklers. And then the last one, um, and this is when I'm going to turn it in, turn it into Veronica. She's going to be talking about the modifications related to electric vehicle and photovoltaic systems, uh, the REACH Code.
Great. Thank you so much, Ben. Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, before I go into my, um, EV vocabulary, I just wanted to mention and remind you all that, um, we did a update on the, um, EV PV REACH Code and the building electrification ordinance, um, I, I believe last month, where I mentioned that, um, we would be looking to re-adopt our EV PV REACH Code as they are, um, amendments to the building code and need to be re-adopted every three years. Um, the PV or the photovoltaic, um, pieces that dealt with, um, solar and energy storage are covered in the twenty-twenty-two building code, so we're not making any recommendations, uh, for those today. Um, instead, we're just going to be focused on electric vehicle charging. Um, previously with the EV PV REACH Code, we had utilized Peninsula Clean Energy's recommendations for, uh, residential EV. So, um, the twenty-twenty-two code has changed a little bit. Uh, so we have some slight modifications to the electric vehicle charging, which I will go over today. Um, and I will also mention that we do have, uh, Philip Kobernick from Peninsula Clean Energy in the audience. So if there's any questions specific to Peninsula Clean Energy, uh, about these recommendations, I have somebody available, um, to answer those questions. So a little bit about EV terminology, because there's, it's a very, it's a little bit jargony. So I want to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, there's three speeds to electric vehicle charging. There's level one, which looks more like your traditional outlet that you see throughout your home, um, that can charge an electric vehicle at three to four miles per charging hour. We have the level two, which looks like your outlet, um, for your dryer. That is a little bit faster, charging at ten to twenty miles per hour. Um, that will, for most people's, um, purposes, will charge their electric vehicle overnight. Uh, and then the level three charges at a hundred and fifty plus miles per charging hour. So those are those superchargers, uh, that you see more in public settings than you see, um, in the home. Uh, as far as readiness, again, there's three types. There's EV capable, which just sets aside a circuit, but does not actually have the location for the electric vehicle to plug into. Um, so it just is dealing with the electrical work, but not the actual plug-in portion. Um, we have the EV ready, which actually includes that outlet, um, whether that be level one or level two. And then the EV charging station itself, or EVCS, is that station that you see again, more often in public settings than, uh, but some people do install them in their homes as well. And then the last, all the way on the side is just a note, uh, for the next couple of slides that show, um, in color, that's the percent of parking spaces that we'll be talking about will have, um, those EV readiness, uh, requirements. Next slide please. Um, so first we're talking about new residential, smaller residential buildings, so single-family homes, duplexes. Um, this will remain the same, uh, from our EV PV REACH Code and the model code. Um, the, so you can see on the, the left-hand side here, that's what our EV PV REACH Code says. The middle, uh, column is what the twenty-twenty-two building code requires. And then, um, all the way to the right is the, the model code that we're recommending, uh, tonight. So you can see that this fits, um, it's exactly the same as our EV PV REACH Code. So for every dwelling unit, there'll be two EV spaces. One is a level two EV ready circuit, so that dryer outlet that charges at ten to twenty miles per hour. And then one level one, um, EV ready circuit, um, that's much slower. And that assumes that there's a garage or a space for two vehicles. And there's some, um, modifications if you have a smaller space. Next slide. Um, and then looking at multifamily, multifamily is a little bit more complicated. And I'm not, and that, this has the same structure as far as the chart's concerned. Um, not going to go over each one of these individually, but, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, what we are recommending tonight is, uh, all the way to the right on the model code. Um, so for any multifamily, um, all of the dwelling units with parking spaces will have, um, either a, uh, charger itself or a EV ready outlet. So fifteen percent of those, um, parking spaces will, are dwelling, the parking spaces for a dwelling unit will have, um, one of those EVCS, so that charger itself. And then the remaining eighty-five percent will have that level two EV ready outlet, um, available for somebody to plug into. Um, with our EV PV REACH Code, we had some different requirements for affordable housing. Um, we don't have those, um, anything different for affordable housing. And, um, some of the main reason for that is Peninsula Clean Energy has some additional incentives available to help those multifamily buildings, um, reach the code. Um, they have some, uh, some incentives that will help multifamily go beyond the code if they're market rate housing, uh, but for affordable housing, they will help them, um, with the requirements of the code of, uh, the REACH Code up to a hundred thousand dollars, which we'll, we'll cover it in, in most cases. But they're, they're really, um, committed to working with those affordable housing, um, uh, partners. So, um, we're not too worried about making sure that there's, um, the different allowances for them. Uh, we don't have any commercial or mixed-use, uh, requirements. We did not in the previous code. Half Moon Bay's commercial buildings are, are very different from elsewhere in the Peninsula Clean Energy territory. We don't have big office buildings or, um, large parking spaces. So we don't have any, um, differing, uh, requirements from the building code when it comes to non-residential. Um, so that's the EV code. I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned, Peninsula Clean Energy, Philip is here as well. Um, but at this point I will pass it back to Ben.
So just to conclude that, uh, this is what we're asking from the city council. The resolution establishing the need for local modifications to the California Building Standard Code and introducing ordinance amendment in chapter fourteen of, uh, municipal code. I don't need to pay twenty-two questions for the California Building Standard Codes. And this concludes staff report and I'm going to stop the share in case you have questions, we're happy to answer.
Okay, uh, just a reminder that this is a public hearing. So we'll start by asking, uh, clarifying questions and then move to take public announcements. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wondered, uh, what is the difference in cost between a level one and a level two station?
Um, I don't. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a large amount. I, I don't know, um, off the top of my head. Philip, um, and from PCE might, might know. Uh, he has his hand raised, so I will take that as, as he has a little bit more information, but it's, it's not significant. If you want to pull him over.
Yeah.
Great, there he is.
Welcome, Philip.
Yes, good evening, council members. Um, quick response on that. Uh, level one in a retrofit environment, uh, those are typically around two, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars each, depending on complications, of course, and trenching. Um, if it's, the same price is, is pretty comparable for a level one outlet and a level two outlet. Again, you're just running conduit and putting a plug at the end. For a charger, those range anywhere from typically in the four to eight thousand dollar range. You certainly can spend more for a charger if you want to. Uh, but in our program, we're typically seeing around five or six thousand dollars per port. It's, it's a more premium charging, um, experience for sure.
And a little bit of clarification, the building code amendments are only focused on, on new construction. So Philip, I don't know if you have a difference in price for new construction between a level one and level two?
Slightly, yeah, slightly cheaper. I don't have them right in front of me, but I would say, uh, yes, slightly cheaper, uh, than that. But, well, within that range roughly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Deborah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, the charger itself is four to six thousand for the level two or the level one or two. Are they equivalent in cost?
A level two charger fully installed is somewhere in the four to six thousand dollar range. The actual hardware itself is typically one to two thousand dollars per station for a commercial charger, although there are cheaper options.
All. Through the mayor, if I may just add that, um, it's generally the cost of the electrical equipment to the charger. Um, so. So with level two, acquire more voltage, so generally you're running a new, new run of power. So that's where a lot of the cost comes in.
Thank you.
Harvey, did you have your hand raised? Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Going to open the public hearing. Bridget, do we have any hands raised?
We have, currently we have one, and John Olin has his hand raised.
Thank you for allowing me to comment. I really appreciate the need for all this, and there was a lot of good information there. But my assumption is that you really would like people to watch these city council meetings and wade through it. And PowerPoint presentations, as I've pointed out in the past, are killing your audience. And I understand that, you know, that everybody's kind of keyed their whole life up, you know, their whole jobs around PowerPoint presentations, but they aren't effective. They really don't transmit that much information. It would have been far more efficient just to have put that PowerPoint presentation into one, into the agenda packet. And you all would have read it, it's all your responsibility and jobs to have read it before you even got here. And any questions you would have, then you would ask. And as you know, if we're talking about building code permits, there really aren't a lot of citizens that are going to participate in that kind of discussion. But the ones that will, will appreciate having all the information in front of them long before they get to anything close to a PowerPoint presentation. And will themselves be able to ask appropriate questions. You know, this is true. All of you have sat through PowerPoint presentations at work. Unless the presenter is really entertaining and good at it, has a good topic to work with, they are boring as I don't know what to say. Now, not everybody's agreeing with me, I can see there. But I think you could look it up on the internet and you would see IM in the majority. And I am sorry that I've taken two minutes already whining about this. Honest to God, though, as interesting as this stuff is and as important as it is, you're killing your audience, and that should be taken into account. Thank you.
Any other hands raised, Bridget?
Uh, yes, we have Crystal in with the chamber next, and that's all I have so far.
Thank you so much. I like everything that I saw in that ordinance. I'm actually just wanted to respond to John that although PowerPoint presentations are not the very best, they do serve a purpose in that many of us have auditory processing issues and they help guide us through the system. And some of us are very, very hard of hearing. And the PowerPoint presentations do provide a very important aid in understanding these presentations and being able to take them in because auditory is not the only way that these meetings go. Thank you.
So we're accommodating different learning styles as part of mission for inclusivity and outreach. Okay. Anybody else? Are there any other hands raised?
I have no public comment, that was it, those two.
So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council, Robert.
No, you're muted.
Apologies. You know, I did also want to comment on what John Olin said, I know he's brought it up a few times. So two things, I think minimally, we need to have public access to all the PowerPoints that are presented in our repository on our website. So that's when they're already done. So I think it's great if people can reference those. Sometimes we're going, you know, we're going to revisit some of that information. So I think we brought that up before, so I'm not quite sure why that's been done. So I'm really recommending to staff to do that. As much as possible, I also agree that it's great to have the PowerPoints ahead of time for all the reasons that we've heard, you know, and there are learning differences. So I definitely see the appeal of having a PowerPoint. And the other thing is you can have a PowerPoint ahead of time, you can have a griefer one in terms of the present, actual presentation, council meetings. So you can have a less detailed, maybe summaries, and put more detail on something people see ahead of time. So just something to think about. And we do put out a lot of information, there's a lot of detail. And if people can have an opportunity in advance to look at a PowerPoint, that could be really useful, so.
I, I agree with Robert. And, you know, having it ahead of time, it's just a chance to provide a Spanish language version as well so that Spanish speakers can, you know, read up in advance of a meeting as well. And, and having those in a repository would help maybe people wondering about, you know, permitting issues. And having, you know, some visual aids like a PowerPoint, you know, might help, you know, at that point as well. Uh, anybody else? Is there a motion per staff? That would be two items. Maybe we could have the, the recommendations back up on the screen, so someone.
Yeah, I have, I'm handy too, so.
Okay.
So let's see, I move, having conducted a public hearing and receiving, having received community input that we introduce an ordinance, I think, chapter 14, going to four of the half moon bay municipal code, adopting by reference the 2022 edition of the California Building Standards Code with local amendments. And finding the amendments to be exempt from environmental, environmental review made California Environmental Quality Act. And that we direct staff to place the ordinance in the attached resolution establishing the lead for local model, need for local modifications to the California Building Standards Code and ratifying the Coastside Fire Protection District's ordinance number 2022 dash zero three on the consent calendar for adoption at our next meeting on December 20th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Robert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hermaniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now I'm going to ask for a five-minute break before we start the disposable foodware item. So I will see you at about 8:30.
Okay.
Welcome back. Looks like everybody's here. Okay, our next item is the disposable, disposable foodware ordinance update. Uh, this is a public hearing.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor. I will share my screen with my presentation. All right, can you see that? I think I did it. All right, great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Me again, Veronica Bosnak, Public Works Program Manager. And I'm here to give you a little bit more information on some updates to the disposable foodware ordinance. So a little bit of background, you all adopted a disposable foodware ordinance in October of 2020. I'll go over as a reminder a little bit about what that ordinance included on the next slide. But January through July of last year, the city and the county together conducted some education outreach for the local restaurants and food service businesses. And on July 9th, 2021, was the enforcement date for the ordinance. Our ordinance was based on the county's model code. And the city was one of the first cities in the county to adopt their ordinance with some modifications. And we were the first to enforce. The rest of the unincorporated county and some of the other cities set an enforcement date of October of 2022, so they just very, very recently started enforcing. And a lot more cities are coming on board and starting to enforce in the, in the next six to 12 months. In October of 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom signed AB 1200 and AB 1276 into law, which is relevant to this. I'll talk about them a little bit more in detail, but both of these laws focus on foodware. And we want to make sure that we're consistent with these laws. And that's part of what's prompting some of these updates today. So a summary of the ordinance that was adopted in 2020. First, there are provisions to use reusables wherever practicable, especially for dine-in. And if necessary, if reusables can't be used, then any disposables must be fiber-based and compostable. So when I'm talking about fiber-based, I'm talking about paper, wood, that looks natural, it's usually brown or green. Plastic and bioplastic disposables are not allowed. And any accessories must be distributed only by request of the customer. This was a slight difference from the county's model ordinance, and it was more restrictive. And I do want to mention that the enforcement of this ordinance is on a complaint basis. So there is information on the city and the county's website on how to make a complaint. And at this time, if you make a complaint, then the county's foodware aware team will come out and help provide resources to that business to make sure that they, they know how to be compliant and they have the support to do so. So a little bit of progress for outreach and support. Because we were the first city in the county to have an enforcement date, we had the luxury of being a little bit of a pilot for the, the county's foodware aware team, which is the County Office of Sustainability Staff, Environmental Innovations, and Rethink Disposables. They made verbal contact through either the phone or in-person visits to all of our food facilities before our enforcement date. So every single one of them, which was just short of 100, so it was a really impressive effort. From those phone calls or in-person visits, if the food service business felt as though they needed a little bit more assistance, there was free technical assistance available from the foodware aware team, whether that be from purchasing itself or a little bit about their operations. That free technical assistance is still available to businesses. And the information is available on our website or, you know, anyone could reach out to myself and I'm happy to connect them. Compliance, we've seen, have seen a lot of businesses work towards not just the fiber-based compostables, but to reusables. I've seen a lot of reusables, especially for dine-in, which is especially impactful because there was a little bit of hesitation due to COVID and there was a little bit of a switch towards disposables. So to see an increase of reusables is, is really impressive and a testament to what the language in that ordinance focuses on reusables was able to accomplish. We do have, we have seen some issues. Generally, these issues for food service businesses are focused on or are as a result of supply chain issues, which we know is a problem in many sectors, not just when it comes to foodware. And also the availability of some items. Some things that come to mind are some of the hot items for curries or soups. There's only a couple companies that, that make them and, and they're in, in high demand. So talking a little bit about AB 1200 and AB 1276, which is prompting the update this evening. AB 1200 prohibits the distribution and any sale of food packaging that contains fluorinated chemicals. These chemicals have been proven to increase people's I can't think of the word, but people are more likely to have health issues like liver damage, thyroid issues, obesity, fertility issues, and some hormone suppression. There are other states that have passed similar laws, and California adopted theirs in October of last year. And then AB 1276, which provides, prohibits a food facility from providing any single-use food or accessory or condiment to a customer unless requested by the consumer. This was already achieved through our ordinance, but there's a little bit of a disconnect between our ordinance definition for accessory and condiments and the states. So some of these updates are just focused on reconciling some of those differences and making sure that it's consistent and just as stringent as the state law, but also not confusing for food service businesses. So as I mentioned, the objectives for the edits today, my first is to update the city ordinance for consistency with AB 1200 and AB 1276, but to continue with the ultimate goals of the ordinance that was passed in 2020. So eliminating disposable foodware that's not reusable or compostable, improving the health and safety of Half Moon Bay community members, and reducing the unnecessary distribution of disposable food or items and accessories. So we have two options for you all tonight. The first one is just focused on reconciling those differences between those two state laws. I will also mention that our previous version of the ordinance required that some of these larger items be BPI, Bio, Bio Degradable Products Institute, or CMA, Compost Manufacturing Alliance certified. The main reason behind this certification in the original ordinance was that it, it, it looked at those fluorinated chemicals and made sure that there was no more than trace amounts. Because the state law is covering that, and that intention is, that's the intention behind the certification, we're, we're removing the requirement for those certified items. One of the reasons for doing so is this extra certification makes it a little bit harder for items to be available and a little bit harder for restaurants to find what they need. So because the state law takes care of the intention, we wanted to remove the certification to allow a larger amount of items to be available for the food service facilities. And this is not mentioned on here, but we also, in attachment one, we've also reconciled the, the definition inconsistencies between the state law and our ordinance. And attachment two, we have an add-on. The City of Pacifica earlier this year was inspired by Half Moon Bay's addition for the reusable requirement in our previous ordinance, and they made it a little bit stronger. So attachment two, we have for your consideration, if that's something that you're interested in, beginning on June 1st, 2023, which is the same date as Pacifica. But of course, if the council wants to choose a different date, that can be done. It would require that reusable foodware be used for on-premise dining. I have a little bit more information about that as well. So the reason behind that proposed language, it's a little bit more stringent. It, it's, it's, it requires that if you have onsite dining, that you use reusable foodware. There is an opportunity for some hardship exemptions if, if necessary. But overall, staff feels as though this language is clearer and easier to enforce than our, than our current language. Food facilities shall use reusable foodware in place of disposable foodware wherever practicable. This language gave a little bit more flexibility, but it is harder to enforce. The cost of reusables, we have a lot more information now than we did in two thousand and twenty. There is a larger upfront cost for reusables, but it becomes less expensive. And ultimately, a lot of food service facilities will save money over time. There are incentives available through the county, especially for businesses with low profit margins or for businesses that are owned by Black Indigenous or people of color. And then there's also another program through plastic-free restaurants. And between the two programs, a lot of food service businesses may be able to fully cover the costs to move to reusables. There are other cities, as I mentioned, like Pacifica, that have required onsite reusables for onsite dining. There's, I want to say about eight to ten in the state, and I've listed a couple here. So this is not something that's that's new. This is something that other cities, especially in the area, are are doing. And I did want to make a mention because one of the members of the Foodware Aware Team, Rethink Disposables, did a case study in Half Moon Bay with Jersey Joe's Coastside. They invested about a little over a thousand dollars in reusables. They had a six-month payback period, and now they're seeing about five thousand five hundred net cost savings from that switch. They're saving over a hundred and ninety thousand disposable items produced per year. I think that there was about five items that they replaced. And throughout the year, they're going to be saving a hundred and ninety thousand plus. And that equates to seventeen hundred pounds of annual waste reduction. So even with a business that's doing fifty percent of takeout, requiring that they have reusables for dining could have a really big impact, not just on the waste, but also some cost savings once they get past that payback period. So here, I have the recommendation for you all today, and I can keep this on the screen once we've had our discussion and and questions. I do want to mention that this has a slight difference between the staff report and what's on here. The staff report said that we would be amending the ordinance, but it's more accurate to say that we're repealing and replacing. So I have the words that are differ from the staff report underlined on this slide here. So the first option would be to introduce an ordinance that is just focused on consistency with those state laws that I mentioned, and also freeing up the that certification requirement. And then option two would do everything that option one does, but also would require those reusable foodware for on-premise dining and have that stronger language. So with that, I'm here for any questions. I will move off of the screen so that you all can see each other, but I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Veronica. So this is a public hearing, so we would start with clarifying questions and then move to take public comment. Are there any clarifying questions for staff at this moment? Vice Mayor.
Yes. Could you explain a little bit more clearly? I I know you tried, and I know it's not easy. The removal of language around the fluorinated chemicals and the and the carcinogenic. I I don't think, I don't think the public can understand if I can't understand.
No, no, no problem. Yeah, so our previous ordinance had a requirement for various certifications. So it was bio B P I and C M A. This certification does a couple things. One, it ensures that items will break down in industrial composting environment. And the other part ensures that there's no more than trace amounts of those fluorinated chemicals that can cause some of the health issues that I referenced in my presentation. The state law, A B twelve hundred requires that any food that is served, the food that is sold in the state of California, whether that be prepackaged or prepared food that is distributed must not contain those chemicals. So the purpose behind having that B P I certification was to ensure that it was compostable and that it did not have those chemicals in it. The state law covers that for any foodware sold in the state of California. So by removing that requirement, we're providing more options for the food service businesses. But we no longer have to be concerned about those those PFAS because they are they are not allowed by by state law, which is more more effective overall, since California is a pretty big market. I hope that clarifies. But tell me if it doesn't.
Well, I I think that I the thing I don't get is if if we're talking about enforcing a lot of enforcing our ordinances, for instance, enforcing the state laws. And we say to people, gee, get educated, don't do it anymore. But we're not going to be doing anything more than that to you. What is the incentive for them? And if you take away the things like certification from them, making it not necessary that they buy certified products. Isn't that sort of an incentive to to scoot around the law and and I I don't know, I just don't know how clear it is to the general public and how easy it is going to be to enforce.
So the state is responsible for enforcing that piece. And because they're looking at a larger market, it's it's so, for example, I've seen this a little bit already. I've been helping some people buy disposable foodware if if they need it. And one example is is Amazon. You can order foodware from Amazon. Currently, if you try to order any items that are not consistent with with that state law, Amazon will not send them to you. So the the state is responsible for enforcing that and make sure that those who are selling the foodware are not selling foodware that contains those PFAS.
Interesting face, doctor.
I also, I will mention, I do, there is also, I don't know if he I believe he's here, I don't know if he has more information or is better at explaining it than than I am. But we do have somebody here from the County of San Mateo Office of Sustainability. Bridget, his name is is Kevin Liu. Kevin, if you have any more information and you want to raise your hand, please feel free.
Yeah, Veronica, it's not that you're not explaining it well. It's that I I don't, I don't see the public buying into it. And and I don't see the need for removing language from our ordinances, even if they are duplicative.
Hey, good evening, City Council members. So yeah, I think Veronica captured it pretty well. The reason why we wanted to make this amendment is to remove the inconsistency of the start date of the local ordinance and the state laws. Because, you know, with A B twelve hundred and twelve seventy six, they have different start dates that are different than our county's model ordinance. So we wanted to keep that consistent. And yeah, for enforcement, we are relying on the state to do this. We realize that there are pros and cons around that. But to to not overstep any state legislations, we decided to take a step back on our local county ordinance and leave it to the states to enforce it.
Are you good there?
I think that's silly, but I I I hear you.
Any other clarifying questions before we move to public hearing? See none? Bridget, open her up.
Looks like first we have John Ullman, and second we'll have a phone, followed by after the phone, Karen.
I'd have to say I learned much more about this topic from Dr. Penrose's question than I did from the whole PowerPoint presentation. This is another example. But anyway, Dr. Pedros, I think what I understand what they're getting at. I have myself ordered stuff for my various customers that I have and have run into where Amazon simply would not ship me a product. And have run into other companies, other vendors out there on the internet wild, they would not ship me a product. And what they're getting at is, instead of trying to enforce the law at the mom and pop restaurant level, they're just going to enforce it at the distribution level. And the distributors have a big stake in getting things right because they can be fined very hugely if they're distributing those kinds of products. And by doing it this way, the scale of the economics gets to be such a point where it's cheap, simply cheaper to comply than it is cheap. And so I know there is a tendency to want to make rules and try to enforce them. But the right way is to have the lightest possible touch. And what they're describing to, from what I understand, based on the excellent question that you asked, is they've got a very thoughtful way of dealing with this, and that is to deal with it at the macro scale instead of the micro scale. And that's it for my big words today. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, next we have a phone number, six five zero, a phone number. And the last digits are, oh yeah, she got it. There you go, are he? There you go.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, great, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Sally Liu, and I'm the co-founder of Reusable San Mateo County. We're a coalition of community members and organizations working to reduce plastic pollution in our county to safeguard our health and communities and our environment. We are excited to hear about the option two. And we urge the county to adopt the version that requires reusable foodware for onsite dining. We agree with Veronica in that we do think it provides important clarity to the restaurants on the implementation. And we applaud Half Moon Bay for being the leader in San Mateo County for prioritizing reusable foodware. We do think the current language, wherever practical, was a great first step. And we do think that moving forward with requiring the usable for onsite dining, such as the language that was brought forward by Pacifica, provides more clarity and understanding for restaurants for what compliance, what's required for compliance, and if they cannot, specific reasons to ask for an exemption. And the, we recognize the great work the city has done with the San Mateo County team to transition Half Moon Bay restaurants to reusables. And knowing that the technical and financial support will continue is essential for restaurants. And I think we'd love to emphasize the most important for restaurant, the most most important aspect for restaurants is that it always saves them money. And for the community that reduces waste and keeps the environment clean. So we feel it is a real win-win for everyone. So we urge the council to support option two, requiring reusables. So thank you so much.
Next, we have Karen Mason, Madison.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rodak and City Council members. My name is Karen Madison, and I'm the Rise Above Plastics Policy Lead for the San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. As the City Council considers updates to bring the disposable food service ware ordinance into compliance with California state law, Surf Rider encourages you to update the ordinance to change the existing language that states whenever practicable, food facilities shall provide reusable foodware in place of disposable foodware. This language, wherever practicable, essentially makes providing reusable foodware a nonrequirement. So you now have the opportunity to update the ordinance to include clearer language requiring reusable food service ware when dining at a restaurant. This is the option two that Veronica has presented. The City of Pacifica adopted language to require reusables, and restaurants there have made or in the process of making changes to be in compliance by two thousand and twenty three. We understand Half Moon Bay's initial intention was to delay impacts during the pandemic. And it's understandable that we wouldn't want to put an extra burden on businesses at a challenging time like this. However, most restaurants in Half Moon Bay seem to have already used reusable, reused reusables onsite. Plastic Free Future and Reusable San Mateo County have put together financial information for the county on the costs and savings of using reusables. There's also free technical assistance for food businesses. And the County Office of Sustainability is offering small grants to help offset costs. So we ask you to update the ordinance to reduce single-use plastic pollution on the coast side, on our streets and trails, in our neighborhoods, on our beaches, in our ocean and waterways, and to adopt a requirement for reusable dining ware when eating in a restaurant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Amanda.
Hello, and thank you honorary Half Moon Bay City Council members. My name is Amanda, and I'm currently part of Bay Cats, a youth climate action group in the Bay Area. I'm also a sophomore currently at Stanford Online. Every year, over three hundred eighty million tons of single-use plastic is produced around the world. This amount of plastic has had endless detrimental effects on our planet and our communities, and also disproportionately affects marginalized communities. For example, communities of lower income tend to have to live closer to areas that are heavily impacted by the negative effects of plastic. As a result, they unfairly have to suffer the consequences such as extremely heavy air pollution due to plastic production and incineration. There are more than over a hundred dangerous chemicals in the air pollution for plastic production, exposing the people living near these facilities to things like cancers and various diseases. One huge step that we can take towards reducing the usage of single plastic is to move to reusable foodware instead. Half Moon Bay has been the leader in the San Mateo County in prioritizing reusable foodware. Therefore, I strongly urge you to adopt option two and to require reusable foodware for onsite dining and providing important clarity to restaurants on implementation. This would be a great step towards eliminating plastics and all of their disastrous effects on our planet. Thank you for listening to my comment and for supporting option two.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole. Nicole, are you there? Can I unmute?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you honorary Half Moon Bay City Council members. I'm from the Bay Area Youth Climate Action Team, also known as Bay Cats, and my name is Nicole. I live in the Bay Area as a sophomore at Saratoga High School. Ever since I was in kindergarten, my family and I have gone fishing at least once a year, getting on boats and driving away to places around half an hour away from the dock. Every once in a while, however, I see trash floating near the rocks that jut out in the middle of the sea. This is terrible for not only the environment, but also for the lam- animals living inside the various ecosystems in the ocean and us. Microplastics have been detected in marine organisms ranging from plankton to whales and in seafood too. Plastic debris left in the ocean can also cause many sea animals to fall victim to suffocation, drowning, starvation, and other health effects, which in turn can be passed on from one predator to another and eventually to us. The effects of consuming these animals can lead to many harmful chemicals being put into our digestive system, including some that increase health risks such as organ problems and developmental delays in children. These microplastics can even be found in drinking water. In fact, some standard water treatment facilities cannot remove all traces of these microplastics. Basically, by using plastics in our lives, we are just increasing the chances that our bodies will absorb or consume something that was not made for us to consume. One way that we can decrease the amount of plastic that we use every day is by banning the use of plastics in dine-in restaurants. We support the proposed option to update to the ordinance that would provide clearer language for reuse onsite and require all restaurants to use reusables for on-premises dining. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Lana Levison, and then followed by Hazel Jonas.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can speak up just a little bit.
Okay, um, hello honorary Half Moon Bay City Council members. My name is Lana Levison, and like Amanda and Nicole, I'm a member of Bay Cats. Um, the issue I would like to talk about is plastic pollution, which not only affects the environment, but also affects ourselves. The sheer amount of plastic on the earth makes it virtually impossible to escape as it appears in our food, water supplies, and our own bodies. The clothes we wear consist of synthetic plastic materials that can be inhaled as we move throughout the day. With every load of laundry, nine million particles are released into our waters. This can result in plastic being released into our water supply or into the oceans to be consumed by sea life that we then consume. It is imperative that we limit our consumption of plastic, in turn limiting our exposure to these harmful materials. I urge you to take action against this plastic pollution by moving towards the usage, by moving towards the usage of reusable foodware. Um, adopt option two, which will require the use of reusable foodware for all in dining and Half Moon Bay restaurants, while also providing clearer language for restaurants to adhere by. This is an effective method in reducing the plastic waste that pollutes our communities as proven by restaurants that have already made the switch. By adopting option two, you are ensuring a cleaner, safer environment for your city. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening to my request.
Thank you. Next we have Hazel Jonas.
Good evening. Um, I am in favor of op- of option two. I'd also like to see the ordinance have something in it that also helps the consumers or the, um, people that are eating at restaurants to perhaps educate them in asking the restaurant owners to provide you with reusable, uh, cutlery or whatever you have, uh, instead of them providing us with just plastics or, you know, un- uh, unreusable, um, elements. So in, as part of the ordinance, is there a possibility also to have an education you, uh, a part of the ordinance to go along with it, to educate the public at large and also, um, information that is given out to the restaurant owners? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Rodeck, I think that is it. No one else is raising their hand. You're on mute as well.
I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Um, we heard a lot of commentary, but there were, there was at least one question from, um, a commenter at the end about an education component. So perhaps staff or the city attorney might, might address that. I don't know how that would work exactly. And that maybe, you know, one alternative would be for the city to just do some education around the, um, the ordinance and its various, um, media website and things like that, but I'll let staff respond.
Um, Veronica, do you want to respond to that? I think we also maybe want to mention the, um, the memorandum of understanding we have with the county to help with enforcement efforts, which I think does have an educational component as well.
Yeah, so, um, I also am not sure exactly how to add in an education portion into the ordinance itself, but I think, you know, we do, um, we could have some more information available on our website and can explore how, um, how we can do that in collaboration with restaurants. Maybe the chamber, um, is interested in helping us with an education component. Regarding the MOU that Catherine is referring to, we have an MOU with the county to, um, do the education and enforcement, um, for this ordinance on our behalf, uh, because our reusable portion differs from theirs. The, um, the county, um, has indicated to us that they, um, would not do the education, or they would do the education for the reusable portion, um, previously, and, um, they would not do the enforcement for the reusable portion. However, the education was focused more on educating the restaurants on what's involved in the, uh, ordinance, not so much educating the public. I, I think there was, um, a small education component for the public, but that was more countywide, and that's, um, a countywide effort which prioritizes reusables, um, but talks a little bit more about, um, the compostables. So, um, there's a little bit, but I think, um, there is potentially a little bit more, um, that we could do uh, in collaboration with the businesses and the public and on our website and social media and such.
So council, any additional questions or comments?
I have a comment. Would it be possible to, uh, share more information like you did about Jersey Joe's for more local restaurants? About how they have decreased the use of, uh, plastics?
Yeah, I, um, I don't have the, it available to, to me at the exact moment, but, um, the organization Rethink Disposable, which is on the, um, which is on the Foodware Awareness Team that the county has, um, brought together to work on this ordinance enforcement and education. Rethink Disposable, their website has, um, a bunch of case studies, uh, for different types. So Jersey Joe's is one of them, but there's, um, other restaurants, um, elsewhere in, I would say mostly the Bay Area, um, there's at least ten of them. So there are different profiles. There might be, you know, a taqueria and there's a, a school or, um, other types of food and other types of restaurants. And, you know, I think actually, I don't know if there's a specific case study, but I know they also worked with, um, Baskin Robbins, um, in Half Moon Bay, and they just replaced their, um, their water cups from disposable to reusable, and they were able to save, uh, save money with just that one switch as well. Um, again, of course, after they, they get a payback period. So, um, I don't have any specific financials, but I can add that to the website. Sorry. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm sorry, I, I just think it would be a good educational tool for the community to actually visualize, you know, how this is making an impact, you know, about the reusable, the plastics that are in our, in our local restaurants. And that could be an incentive for, you know, for the rest of their businesses or, uh, to not, to not to use reusable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also happy to, to check with, um, Rethink Disposable in the county to see if they have some more information on the individual restaurants that they've worked with. Maybe they don't have a case study that's a nice glossy page, but maybe they have some more information that we can share.
Robert.
Yeah, a couple of comments. Um, first of all, I really, um, appreciate the students calling in and getting involved. I mean, thank you very much. You are the future stewards of the environment, and it's always nice to know that that future, uh, I feel like it's in good hands, at least here on the coast. So thank you very much for getting involved and, um, calling in on this important issue. And, um, you know, I can actually, I was also thinking about that Jersey Joe's case study. I mean, first of all, Veronica, thank you for putting it up there. I mean, it was so simple and stated, one, how little money they really had to spend to, um, uh, invest in some, you know, reusable, um, plates, cups, et cetera. And how quickly they had that savings, even though that fifty percent of the food is taken out, they still had an unbelievably percentage-wise significant savings. And I think it's a great case study because we all know Jersey Joe's. Anyone from the public can just kind of like walk in there and see in use. And, um, any other, uh, food vendors also can go in and talk to folks at Jersey Joe's and say, yeah, how easy was it? I mean, such an accessible case study for anyone to check in for themselves. And, um, so yeah, nothing makes a case better than a case study right here in our city. So that was great. And, uh, you really made the point very directly and simply. And to John Allen's point, even though it was in a PowerPoint, the case study itself is better than a PowerPoint. It's live action there. So it's great. Appreciate it being there. And thank you for the overall background, Veronica, and, um, great presentation.
Harvey, do you have any comments?
Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of option two. I think, uh, this is clearly advantageous to reduce the amount of plastic in the environment. Uh, I'm grateful that, uh, the caller, callers, uh, realize that too, that, um, it's, it's a win-win ultimately. So, uh, I'm in favor of option two.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. Is there a supply chain issue with restaurants wanting to purchase reusable items? Do we know that? I, I mean, there's supply chain issues for everything, it seems.
Um, I, I do not know specifically. I think that there, there's a bigger issue with the disposables because there's a larger volume of them, and there's also just a smaller subset of them available compared to some of the plastic alternatives. Um, I can look into that more specifically, though.
It'd be interesting to know and interesting to, to know what kind of help, uh, folks can get. I know you mentioned there were a couple of programs. One of them is a county program, um, to, to help restaurants, you know, get purchased reusable.
Yeah, so the, the county program, there's, there's two parts to it. One is, uh, free technical assistance. So a restaurant could call the county Foodware Awareness Team and, and say, you know, I want to switch to reusables, and these are the items that I use, and I'm not sure how, like, what, what works. Or they can ask some, you know, questions about their operations, like where do I store it? Or how do I wash it? Um, that, that assistance is currently available, and I know that there's a couple of restaurants on the coast that have used them. Um, and I've actually heard, um, from our code enforcement that he's heard, um, uh, compliments from their team about how helpful they are and how nice they are. I don't think that our code enforcement gets a lot of compliments, so I, um, I've heard a lot of compliments about that team, and I've worked with them myself, and, and they are really helpful. Um, and then the county does have some limited funds available for, um, businesses. I think, uh, most businesses can qualify, um, maybe through a slightly competitive process for three hundred dollars. Um, the, the priority of that is given to restaurants that have lower, uh, profit margins. So, you know, that we're not providing these incentives to food facilities that are, that have a lot of profit. We're, we're targeting the ones that are really needed. Um, and then those that, um, are, um, BIPOC or LGBTQ owned can qualify for an additional three hundred dollars. Again, I think it's, it's not just an automatic, you get it. There's a little bit of a process that they have to go through. Um, and then there's also other organizations, um, which I know the Foodware Awareness Team will connect them to. One of them that comes to mind is plastic-free restaurants, which if, um, will just provide money to them upfront. I think, um, it's in like the, it's around five hundred dollars, um, that is available. And then again, there's a process they have to go through. They have to provide receipts and, and a couple of things. But, um, there's both financial and hands-on, um, programs that are currently available, and I know are being deployed, um, by the Foodware Awareness Team to our businesses now. Um, and that would continue to be available.
Great, thank you.
And, and, and so Vice Mayor, um, are you favoring option two or option one at this point?
I, I'm in favor of option two.
Okay. So, um, I'm in favor of option two as well, and, you know, I think we just have to move in that direction. You know, whenever we have the opportunity, uh, to eliminate plastics in a way that's, that, you know, minimizes, um, harm or allows lead times for people to adapt, I think we have to take it. So I'm, I'm favoring, uh, moving forward now. I hope the county does as well. So, um, would someone like to make a motion if we could have the recommendation, uh, put back up on the screen so that someone could read the?
Yes, I am happy to do that. There's a lot of words.
Two-part recommendation.
Yeah, so if you're looking at, um, option two, that would be just this, uh, just this portion here. I can make it full screen.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I can make the motion. Um, I move that we introduce an ordinance repealing or replacing chapter seven point thirty of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code entitled disposable foodware regarding food facilities provision of single-use foodware accessories and the removal of language surrounding fluorinated chemicals, the removal of language surrounding BPI certified compostable plastics, and beginning on June first, twenty twenty-three, requiring reusable foodware for on-premises dining and finding the amendments to be exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Um, yes, Councilmember Roberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So now that's the regular agenda. We're going to move back to item one B, the reradification of the resolution to continue holding public meetings remotely. Um, would that be, um, city attorney?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'm happy to cover this item. This is the city clerk's, um, uh, staff report, but I'm quite familiar with this, uh, state law. So, uh, I believe the item was pulled for a discussion of returning, uh, back to in-person meetings. Um, as noted in the staff report, uh, the current format of, of, um, online meetings is authorized under AB three sixty-one, so long as the council continues to make the findings, which are based on the statewide local, I'm sorry, the statewide, um, uh, Governor Newsom's, uh, uh, emergency order. That order will expire, um, on February, uh, let's see, twenty-eighth, I believe, the end of, end of February. Uh, so at that point, unless it's renewed, um, the city council will no longer be in a position to make those findings. Um, and the plan of staff is to return to in-person, um, meetings at that time. Uh, so that is, um, you know, the current, um, the current plan of staff. I'll ask the city manager if there's anything else to elaborate on. I, I understand that we're planning for a hybrid meeting so that the public can continue to attend either in person or via Zoom. Uh, but the council would be, and staff, um, would be, um, uh, there in person.
That's correct. I don't, I don't at this time have anything to add. Thank you.
So this, this was requested by, um, Mr. Ullman. Well, this, is he there to address this item?
Yes, he's raising his hand. Go ahead, John, you can speak.
Thank you for pulling this. Uh, I think you addressed some of it. My concern, it sounds like you're contemplating the end to all of this. Um, you know, going and starting to go back to a more normal way of having city council meetings. Uh, I can tell you that, you know, I was out there at the Night of Lights. There were a lot of people. There were people singing and people, not, no one was masked. I can tell you that I've been at the Kaiser a lot lately, got a back issue. And I've talked to my doctor and asked him, you know, I just asked questions and asked him, you know, how's it going COVID-wise? And I also know this problem with the flu and RSV or something else. Said things were under control. You know, they weren't, they weren't jammed in the emergency room. They weren't having trouble finding rooms or ventilators. Unfortunately, I've spent a lot of time over at San Mateo County with somebody else who needs some help from doctors. And same situation, there's, there is no crisis going on right now. And so I don't know how you evaluate when you start. I mean, to me, it seems like the way to look at it would be hospitalization rates and is it getting to the point where people can't get rooms? And it doesn't seem like you've really talked about it. And I see the benefit for you in not coming into the meetings. It's, you know, it's got to be more convenient for you. But going into meetings is really fun, and it was really part of a lot of people's way of participating in the city. So I know you're not going to change it next week or now, and I'm glad to hear you're contemplating an end to, uh, only having Zoom meetings. No one likes Zoom meetings. So I guess I have nothing to complain too much about. I'm glad you're going in that direction. But I hope we get there as fast. But I hope we get there as fast as possible. The world's a lot safer than I think you realize it is. Thank you.
Thanks. I would disagree with Mr. Ullam, just because people want it to be over and it's over. And not dying doesn't mean things are good. We're not mitigating it enough as it is, you know? Children are filling up emergency rooms across this country, maybe not. Yeah, well, you know, I've had it once. I don't want it twice, you know? I I mask up. I know most people do not. But, you know, I I think that people are living in kind of a dream world if they think it's over. So I'm just going to leave it right there. Do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, we have a couple down there.
Okay.
Kimberly Williams is next, followed by Carlisle. Anne, go ahead, Kimberly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. With all due respect to Mr. Ullam, I do want to give a voice to those who, for myself, I have a mother who has metastatic breast cancer and she, maybe catastrophic for her to get this virus. And not exposing myself in a public forum is really important so that I remain available to her and my father as well, who is not in the best of health. So I think that's an important thing to consider because it allows those of us who can't expose ourselves to a large number of people in an enclosed public space to participate in these meetings. And I think I am still masking and I am vaccinated. But that risk is still pretty high and it's high for a lot of people. And while there are some pretty hardy individuals out there who, you know, may not get sick, that does not negate the responsibility to protect those who are at greater risk. So I thank the city council for considering those needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also the threat of long COVID. And you could get long even if you have a mild case of COVID. And and the long COVID health is only beginning to show itself. So thank you for Kimberly to bringing that information to our attention. It's an important point of view.
Next, we have Carlisle, Anne Young, and then Kristalyn.
Thank you. As much as I would like to agree with John Ullam, I also take Kimberly Williams' position that there are a lot of people out there that go into public without masks on. And I watched the or listened to the Board of Supervisors Health meeting today and they said that they don't think they've seen the spike yet from the Thanksgiving weekend or holiday. Now, I personally was invited for the very first time in a really long time to go to a outdoor concert at OPL. That's Old Prince of Landing, for some of you that may not know, over here in the midcoast. And, you know, I'm an old fogey. I stay home a lot, but I was one of only two people that I saw in the whole damn place that had on a mask. Okay, it was outdoors in their back area, but it was packed. It was like a holiday weekend. It was two good country bands and and they were really rocking it. So I felt a little uncomfortable, even though I had my mask on. And I still haven't, knock wood, gotten COVID, but I do know people that got it. And they now have migraines a lot because of the the after effects of long COVID and and, you know, they they have to cancel things that, you know, plans that we made and stuff. And I'm, I don't want to be that person. I mean, I'd rather be healthy, even if I'm more of a hermit. But I I understand going to, John is right. It's you get a little bit more out of the public meetings when you're there in person. But for instance, today, the Board of Supervisors meeting last started at nine and ended at three. And, you know, then to drive back from Redwood City and then attend this meeting, that would have worn a bunch of people out, including me. So I think if you can continue with these hybrid meetings, at least for the public's sake, you know, it's a little more efficient. You're saving the environment because you're not burning fossil fuels to get over there. I mean, I have a hybrid, but you know, at some point, I know I'm going to have to get an EV. Still, I, at this point, I'd rather just watch the and attend in, you know, on the computer. It's like seeing the people, I think. That's all. Bye.
Thank you. And next is Kristalyn.
Thank you. I would just like to show my appreciation to staff for working on a hybrid. And I would like to give appreciation for allowing the tech to catch up. Had hybrid meetings started even just months ago, the tech was so shoddy that the people on the Zoom end would definitely be missing out. And with the city having just recently signed their updated tech contract, it allows for the new tech company to really work out those bugs. And February is probably a great time for that. And I would also like to note that, as most of us are aware, Zoom does allow people to attend these meetings that wouldn't otherwise. There are business owners that run their businesses all day long and then pick up their kids from school, go home, make dinner. And there are hot button topics that they would not otherwise be able to participate in. And but I do acknowledge that on the flip side of that, there's people that came to public in-person meetings that have never showed up to Zoom because for some tech is an issue. So hybrid is going to be a wonderful next step in public meetings. And I look forward to when they are streamlined and all of our local councils and agencies can perform hybrid in a way that is most amenable to the mass majority of our community and how they want to and are able to receive this very important information. So thank you for all that you're doing on that.
Thank you. Next, we have Hazel Jonas.
Good evening again. I just want to point out that, you know, I I do like hybrid meetings. I don't think I've ever participated as as in that many meetings in the past. But I do see the value of having the public come to a meeting because it's a it's a community event and it it shows community involvement. You know, the latest Health and Human Services extension for the federal health emergency will, it will end January 11, 2023. But they also monitor what is going on in hospitals across the country. And right now, I I do happen to work for many hospitals right now on the COVID side, and there is an uptick. There is definitely an uptick. And I think President Biden also has reserved his opinion to say that, you know, they are monitoring this and they don't feel that, you know, the January 11, 2023 meeting, 2023 deadline to end the he, the health epidemic will actually happen. So I I wanted to have you keep that in mind as you move forward in making a decision today, but also see if there's any way that we can possibly accommodate those that would like to go to in-person meetings. Perhaps maybe, you know, having some kind of community group meetings with not that many members, just taking taking our council to individual neighborhoods every once in a while, you know, small neighborhoods and in and just making you around so that people know who you are, people know you can hear all their concerns. So I mean, there's options to look at and and, you know, not only relying that the state has allowed us to, you know, have these hybrid meetings up until the end of 2023. That can change at any time because the public health and federal emergency could end at any time, too. So in, you know, but I do see in working at hospitals across the nation, there is an uptick. And and there is also now provisions for them trying to get in more hospital beds. So just something for you to keep in mind.
Thank you. And that's all I have for this evening.
Just want to mention that LA County apparently is on the verge of requiring indoor masking again because cases are way up in Los Angeles County. And pediatric deaths in this country, just in the last few months, there have been more of them than in 2020 and 2021 and the first part of 2022 altogether. So things aren't as great as we want them to be. I think we still, even if we meet in person, we want to have people spread out, good ventilation, and, you know, make masks available for people who would like to wear them when they're not speaking. So I hope we can combine in-person meetings with mitigations for those who attend in person. So we have action here. We have to reratify the findings. So we need a motion in a second for the staff report.
Let's see, I move, I can make a motion. I move that in accordance with Assembly Bill 361, we reratify the findings and Resolution Number 2021-70 to continue conducting city council commission and committee meetings remotely due to health and safety concerns to the public due to COVID-19s.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Robach?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Vice Mayor, and I just said commissioners, I'm so sorry. I'm so like stuck on that. Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then we're going back to item, where is it here? It was. 1C, which is the no-build determination for the Main Street Bridge rehabilitation. So I would recommend just a brief report from staff and then allow Mr. Ullam to comment. We'll take it from there.
Happy to do that. Ms. Ms. Mayor, I'm Maz Moszogian, Public Works Director. I do apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint for you to this evening, so we'll just go through real quick a couple of key points. Don't want to hash old history, there's been a lot of meetings and conversations and we have staff report and prior reports attached to tonight's item, but just kind of want to highlight the the big points. Last meeting that we came on this item was March of this year, where council directed staff to send a letter informing Caltrans of the city's intent to suspend the work on the Main Street Bridge rehabilitation project and to start the initiation of the closeout in light of potential adverse impacts. And since then, there's been input from the Federal Highway Administration that the bridge design is no longer considered a rehab project, but a replacement. And with that, the major finding of for the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, is a no-build alternative, which is defined as not moving forward with the federally-funded project to rehabilitate Main Street Bridge. This preferred, the preferred design alternative at this point is not, no longer meets the purpose of the project for the federally-funded rehabilitation. And so there, the determination that we're looking to make is that the only viable option is that the the no-build alternative, given the Measure F requirements and the input we've received from the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans. I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything that we need to go into further detail, but I think that summarizes what we're asking tonight.
Thank you for that brief but informative presentation, Maz. Okay, Mr. Ullam.
Go ahead.
Thank you for pulling this item. I do appreciate the lack of the PowerPoint, we got right to it. Well, I would start off with my first question that I'll have, and I'll just let me go through them all. I only have two questions, but just have me points and you can answer if you choose to. I noticed that there's a statement right away here. Caltrans reimbursement of city's preliminary engineering cost is authorized under Caltrans' Local Assistance Program Guidelines, Chapter 6, Highway Bridge Program, and should not be subject to a refund. And I believe what that means is you think, per your interpretation of the rules, that we don't have to pay back $750,000 to the feds via the state of California. It does not sound like you actually know for a fact whether you're going to pay that three quarters of a million dollars back or not. And I also am curious is whatever happened to the million dollars or so we already spent on the bridge before all this happened, back when we were all fighting to save the bridge? Many of you were there. Okay, and then the fact that we might not pay back this $750,000 is nothing to be proud of. That's real money. That's money that could have gone to fix a nice bike path somewhere for kids who need it or done something useful. But it's just flat out wasted money and we should be ashamed for as far as I can tell because that's a lot of money. So how did this happen? Measure F was a pretty well-known concept on city circles. It looks to me like things were just going to go the way they were going to go and you were going to slap down a new bridge on top of the arch and you really thought, or somebody thought, that was really going to fly. Yet you get a letter from one guy, Mr. Bulby, who I like and is smarter than me, but is not Clarence Darrow. He is not a legal genius. And you guys just give up and say we're not going to do it. So how did this happen? And what is the true status? Do we know for a fact whether we are going to or going to not have to pay back that three quarters of a million dollars? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's, I have no one else for public comment or anything.
May I respond?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick points. So yes, the, this is part of the step of the closeout for the grant of the rehabilitation for the bridge. We are, we are not certain about the potential reimbursement, but we've talked to Caltrans staff and going through the full process and making the determination of the no-build, which is the appropriate action that is present before you tonight, will take us to that next step of closeout. We don't know for sure, but all indications are that we have followed the process and taken it to as the furthest point we could. And at this point, because, and this ties to the second point, that when Caltrans bridge preservation folks also in the Federal Highway Administration started looking at this as not a rehab, but a reconstruction project, that's where a lot of this ended up changing. And a lot of it came from with respect to the the standards for the barriers that changed kind of the dynamic and that was really earned in in the middle of the entire design process on this bridge. So there was, there was definitely some some wrinkles that came up through the process that made it a little challenging and weak this and turned it again away from a rehab and into a reconstruction. And once all those determinations were made, it actually was not hard to make the, go the, go to the decision of the no-build as the proper decision under this particular project. And again, we do have some minor improvements and rehab that we're going with, the city will do under a separate project. But this project closeout is a formal step that we need to do and submit this documentation to Caltrans and the Highway Administration.
And and you have to add, it was up against the citizens initiative, which was so tightly is to basically disallow almost everything. And for anybody who's ever remodeled a house and taken out some drywall and seen what's behind the wall, you know, once you start pulling stuff out, the cost starts going up. Because you got to replace this and you got to replace that and tear this out, it's all connected. And like Maz said, once we started looking at it, costs started going up and it crossed that threshold where we were vulnerable to a lawsuit for violation of Measure F. It was written too tightly. It was written too tightly, I would say. So that's it in a nutshell. Thank you, Maz. You, I think you summed it up well. So, uh, we have to make a finding here and pass a motion and a second. Who would like to, uh, go forward here?
I'm happy to make a motion. I am moved that we adopt since item number one C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to recommend approval of the National Environmental Policy Act no build option for Main Street Bridge Replacement Project and direct staff to prepare all necessary documents to implement this recommendation in accordance with Caltrans and Federal Highway Administration procedures.
Second.
Roll call please.
Um, yes, uh, Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
And Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item three resolutions and staff reports, and we have none of those this evening. But do we have any commission and committee updates?
Madam Mayor, I, I do not believe we have any updates for you tonight. Um, we have a, our final recreation commission meeting of the year tomorrow night. I would encourage the community to tune in. Uh, there'll be, uh, uh, several, uh, interesting items related to some of our parks projects and, uh, and, uh, and then we will reconvene with that group in January. And, um, we did have a planning commission meeting, uh, last week. Um, at that meeting, there were two items covered. One was, um, a, an issue with a project on Valdez Street. And then connected with that was, uh, an evaluation or review of some of our processes and policies, and staff will return to, um, to the planning commission with some recommendations, uh, for updates and improvements to our process in the near future.
Sounds good. Um, any city council reports?
Uh, I attended the Midcoast Community Council Special Meeting, uh, where among the items was the county is now working with Caltrans on a Moss Beach traffic study of three intersections there. This has been going on for about ten years. Uh, but, uh, nobody gives up. They're still talking about roundabouts, maybe signals, maybe getting the, the funding, uh, that will, uh, appeal to Caltrans, maybe. So, uh, it's, uh, stay tuned. It's, uh, an ongoing, uh, saga.
Thank you, Harvey. Anybody else? I have none because a bunch of meetings were canceled. So no more of those meetings until tomorrow, except for Steve Kagg, which is this week. Any, uh, let's see, for future discussion, any possible agenda items?
Yeah.
Go, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I would like to hear from our housing expert. I, I'd like a report on what he's been doing and what's going on with housing.
I agree. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will second that.
If I, if I might mention, I believe, um, there is going to be an item in January, uh, related to the five-five-five Kelly project. And maybe as an extension of that, we can provide an update on all the housing activities that have been going on.
I think that's what she intended.
What, what I specifically would like to do is hear from our housing consultant that we hire.
Oh, okay, not, not our, our housing specialist on staff, but the consultant.
The consultant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
I'd like to hear from our staff too, though.
He, he'll be presenting that item in January. So absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this meeting is adjourned. I hope all of you have, um, a lovely couple of weeks until we meet again on the twentieth. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, all.